Good evening, Austin, Texas and live. What is today, two May, 2011?
Exactly, yes.
Two May, 2011. Long running Jeff Davis Show, 22 years, folks. And we've got another hot show lined up tonight. And.
Worldwide.
Worldwide, yeah, we are worldwide, that's right. Uh, I'm, we're gonna go first to Mike Hansen, who has a beef.
No, I don't have a beef.
Wow, what, what's?
I, I mean, Gary might think, well, all I want to say about this Bin Laden thing is, the boogeyman is dead now. I, for one, want my individual liberty back.
Yeah.
If he's dead, then stop using him as a scapegoat. And when I go to the Travis County Courts, I don't want to raise my hands and them tell me, we're post nine one one. That's all I hear where I go, you're videotaping a cop? Well, it's post nine one one. You're taping the IRS building, it's post nine one one. Anything you do is post nine one one. If the boogeyman is dead, like they say he is last night, and the last thing the president says, liberty and justice for all, okay, I want my liberty back, Gary. What do you have to say about that?
I agree completely.
Okay, why do, why, we, how come we don't hear anything about that today? Of course, I hadn't listened to any of them.
Well, because it's, it's all reading the script right now. It's all, uh, in fact, they're telling us, oh, we have to have even more security because there might be retaliation, so.
Then what are we fighting for if we, are we not fighting for liberty in the first place?
You mean, you don't like the Patriot Act? Where they can, they got a sneak and peek provision where the government can just break into your house while you're at work or?
I don't like any of it. I want the president to put a bounty on anybody that violates our liberty. That's what I want him to do.
Yes, I mean, you have, probably have to start with him first, then.
Well, I, I think it goes way above him and way below.
I think a lot of, a lot of people are infringing upon liberties.
And I absolutely am getting my website back, Jeff. Uh, it's been down for a while. Bohemian Grove Exposed dot com. I'm getting that website, it should be up in the next week.
I read that book on the way to Waco, or actually on the way back.
You did?
Yeah, I read the half, I was like in the backseat reading it, well, in the van. Yeah, I read it. I really liked it, it was actually, it was really good, so.
So, we are getting the website and we, and we do have an announcement that we, we have, hired us a webmaster lady, and we're gonna have, uh.
Pam Farley, who called in here last week, by the way.
Mike Hansen Report dot com, so look, look for that, too.
I'm gonna write stories.
It's gonna be, you're gonna, everybody is.
Would you like to write articles for Mike Hansen Report dot com?
It's gonna be more interactive than, you know, something, you know, like Alex Got Infowars. Uh, it's gonna be more interactive, you know, where you, people can write stories and tell their horror stories.
Mike Hansen Reports dot com.
And you want a piece of that website, you said.
Oh, both of them. Both of them, yeah, I want a piece of both of them.
The first one is Bohemian Grove Exposed, what was the other one?
Uh, Mike Hansen Report. Is it gonna be report or reports, Nate? Both, I think. I don't know where he, he's not listening in the control room.
Maybe we just can't hear him.
I think it's gonna be both, but if it, you know, if you write it in, it's probably gonna come up both. But it's kind of, you know, it's kind of, gonna be our take on things, patriot take on, on different things.
You're going to the bakehouse after this?
After this, we're gonna meet with her there.
Meet with Pam there?
Yes.
George Butler will be there?
It's hard to find a good webmaster, uh, you know, I, I know very little about, uh, same as about Jeff Davis, about a web, the internet.
And that's pretty weak.
And, uh, we have a lot of opinions, the, the patriots have a lot of opinions, and we want to get them out there. And just like Jeff Davis said back in 1996, the internet's gonna be big, folks.
It is big.
All right, I'll go back in there.
I'm surprised they can let us have it. I really am surprised.
I'm surprised, too.
Okay, and we're gonna have, uh, Chris Bailey on?
I guess so, yeah. Candidate for, uh, uh, how was your show, show, uh, Sunday night, Gary?
It was very good, we, uh, had, uh, a little talk about the birth certificate, actually.
Did you really?
We, yes, we had a guest who, uh, is a reporter who actually found Obama, she filed a Freedom of Information Act request and obtained Barack Obama, Obama's father's immigration file.
Yeah, just come on in here.
And it showed that he was born in Hawaii.
Yeah. All right, there's his radio show, Gary Johnson, RuleOfLawRadio dot com, Sunday nights, eight to 10 PM Central Time. Uh, you can listen on the internet and/or 90.1 FM. Uh, before I get to you, Lorraine, I want to, uh, first off, uh, say hello to Dennis Ray Bragg, who I hope is watching from wonderful Northeast Ohio. Um, I'm, I'm friends with about 50 of my high school, people I went to high school and grade school with, we're going way back.
On Facebook?
On Facebook, it's really fast.
Did you find him on Facebook?
Yeah, and I got reacquainted with Dennis on Facebook, so, and he said he would be attending tonight, it's over the internet, so.
Oh, good.
I mean, so it's really, I, I keep telling you, Gary, that Facebook.
Oh.
It's, it's literally controlling my mind, really.
It's a conspiracy.
I don't know if that's good or bad.
And Lorraine, what, what's your situation now?
Oh, regarding what? Oh, my brother is here now and, um, it's, it's like, my plans.
He's where, in Austin?
Yeah, no, he's in San Marcos.
San Marcos.
Yeah, and I, I, that kind of is like destroying my plans to go to Mexico, and I wanted to go, but.
So you're gonna stay in San Marcos?
I don't know yet.
I hope so, America needs your talents, not Mexico or Korea or?
I applied to be a tech at Six Flags and they're interested in me, I was supposed to call them today. Um, so I will definitely give them a call and see if they want me to tech, but I've been here teching for years.
We're gonna get you in some acting gigs, if you hang around.
I've been, I'm, they can't find a better tech than me. I've been teching here for years, um, like since, since I got here, like 2006. So I'm sure whatever technical needs they, they, they need at Six Flags, I can handle it. Um, I was like, the guy interviewing me yesterday was like funny, he's like going, how would your friends describe you? And I thought about Jeff Davis and I said, well, they probably would say I'm talented.
Yeah, multi-talented, multi. Lovely, multi-talented.
Lovely, multi-talented, Lorraine the artist.
She can go on air, like she can be talent, she can be, she knows Final Cup Pro, she, I mean, she can, she can do a lot.
The Six Flags, I mean, what do you do, make sure the roller coaster doesn't crash?
No, no, I'll be, uh, burning the light board or the soundboard.
Does that mean you'd have to leave out, leave Austin, right?
No, I live in San Marcos, I would just drive, I, I'm not in Austin right now, I'm, I'm in between San Antonio and.
So where would Six Flags be?
San Antonio, Texas.
It's, you, you commute that, that every day?
No, I'm not working there right now, but I would be, I would be commuting there every day, it'd be like 40 minutes or so. But yeah, that's all up in the air, but actually I would really love to be a tech at Six Flags, it's like my childhood dream, so.
Lorraine has a bachelor's degree in theater and film.
They, Six Flags is what got me into theater, I seriously, I was like, I, I used to live next to a, a theme park and would go every day. My best friend Stacy was in love with this guy performing in one of the shows there, so she'd get me to come with her every day, we were 14. But yeah, I loved it.
Before it comes, well, let me introduce him first. Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you, okay, now we're gonna go to Mr. Chris Bailey.
How you doing, thanks for having me.
Thank you, thanks for coming on.
Yeah, I was excited to come here.
Yeah, we've been at it a long time here. Um, I was just telling, uh, Nate that, uh, there's a lot of freedom organizations here in central Texas.
Absolutely, there's a whole bunch of them.
Tons of, the Texas militia, I don't know if you're familiar with them, but, but anyway, Chris Bailey, now you're a candidate for Austin City Council Place Three, right?
That's correct, Austin City Council Place Three, my name's Chris Bailey, so.
And you're against, uh, you have a pretty good presence on Facebook.
I do, I do.
Are you running ads?
Uh, yeah, I've been, I've been running some ads, um, my, my Facebook is Chris Bailey, I'm sorry, Facebook dot com slash Chris Bailey for Austin. You can get through it, to it through my website, which is BaileyForChange dot com. But yeah, I've been really blown away, blown away by what's happened on my Facebook page, it's exploded with people asking questions and getting involved and getting interested in local elections, which is somewhat unusual, so it's a good thing.
Well, what, what caught my attention with you, probably, this is probably six weeks ago, something like it, was, uh, you were on the side of Facebook, like an ad, really, looked like an ad. And it was something like, uh, let's stop arresting people for pot possession in Austin.
Yeah.
And see, I'm, I'm totally against the war on drugs.
Well, I, I personally.
So that, that, that caught my attention right there. You're probably the only city council candidate that's advocating that, or is there others?
Publicly. I'll, I'll say I'm the only one advocating that publicly, I mean, I've, I've talked to a whole wealth of politicians in the city council, at the state house. I mean, it's really hard to find people that actually still believe in the war on drugs. What, what, what is, is unique is a politician that's actually openly talking about it and saying, this needs to be an issue in our elections. This, this needs to be an issue in, in local elections, in state elections, in federal elections. As much money as we're spending on, as many lives as we're affecting, this is something that's okay to talk about. I personally, I, I don't use marijuana, I don't care for it, it's not something that, that, um, I'm interested in for my own life, but I'll, I'll say openly, I believe that marijuana should be legalized, um, and.
See, I disagree, at the times I've smoked pot, I enjoy it.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna lie about it. Okay, so.
Sure, yeah.
Well, first, yeah, first, before we do, who, who are your opponents?
Okay, I'm, I'm running for place three, I'm running against Randy Shade, Max Knopf Singer and Kathy Tovo are also running in this race. Um, early voting started.
Max Knopf Singer?
Yeah, he, he jumped back in this.
I didn't even know that.
Yeah, he, he's, uh, he's, he, he's been at forums and debates and talking about.
And who was the other one?
Uh, Kathy Tovo and Randy Shade, she would be, Randy Shade would be the incumbent on this. And then me, Chris Bailey, so.
Well, you've got some support, you're gonna get some votes, I've seen it on Facebook.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, Chris, so I'm almost to the point where I, I've, I've lost a lot of faith in the integrity of the election process.
That's a big.
Even down to the voting, the actual vote count.
Uh, we could talk about that.
You could win and still not win, is what I'm saying.
We could talk about those voting machines, I'd love to talk about that, but, I mean, really, that's what motivated me to run. I'm not, I'm not looking to be a politician, this is not my life's ambition, I'm an insurance adjuster, I have a good job, I like my career. But really, you watch the decisions being made and you think, where's the common sense? And so I started looking for a candidate that I could get behind, a, and, you know, I'm looking there and I'm saying, well, you know, I don't, eh, 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 okay, I'll run. You know, that's, I'll run and I'll talk about my issues and I'll be honest and I'll answer every question somebody asks. If they don't like the fact that I'm gonna be honest with everybody, well, that's okay, because a lot of people will appreciate honesty and being upfront and straightforward with people. And, and strangely enough, this strategy has been very successful. People do like, you know, somebody that's gonna be honest with them in their answers to whatever questions. And they, they don't want to hear people hiding from them, or hiding answers, or dodging issues and giving, you know, wishy washy answers to things. And so that, that's what I'm doing, I'm trying to show you can still be effective and run a good campaign and be honest with people at the same time, so, that's kind of how I ended up here.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, one more quick question on issues, uh, before we play your video here. Uh, this show is riddled with actors, including myself.
Yeah.
What's your, what's your take on, uh, what would, could, what could or should Austin do as far as, uh, getting projects here to central Texas?
Oh boy, that, that, that's a.
If you haven't thought about yet, or?
Uh, yeah, that's, really, I, I think we really have to look at, at cutting out the red tape and making permits easier to obtain in the city, uh, for different events or, or venues, or whatever's going on. Uh, currently, the, the city is just getting more oppressive with its permitting process, and I think a lot of, a lot of what we can focus on is, is getting rid of some of the red tape on that. Um, and making it easier to get these permits, not putting people through, through a rigorous process and, and applying and hoping.
No financial incentives like the state of Texas is doing?
I'm not a big believer in, in passing out public money to private businesses, that, that's not something that I, I really support, because what, what you find is, is then it's done arbitrarily. And the people deciding are, are these people sitting on council and, you know, today it's, we're gonna give, or the la, the last one I read about was eBay is wanting to come to town and they want to know how much money we're gonna give them to come to town. And, you know, last couple of years ago, it was the domain, and, you know, they wanted $64 million, and then we got F1 coming, and they want, you know, they want a few million dollars too, and we've already spent 13 and a half million dollars running water lines out to them. Um, and we're talking about a $4 million subsidy to them. So, you know, while I, while I respect and understand what you're, what you're saying on, on trying to bring business in, really what that leads to is it just leads to higher taxes and it leads to runaway spending. But if we can get rid of some of the red tape and just make it easy for people to do business here, which you'll see is a thriving economy. Texas is very appealing for a lot of reasons, and, and the way we handle our tax structure is one of those, and not having an, an income tax, I believe. Um, and, and having more of a tax friendly environment, I'm not gonna claim Texas is tax friendly, because I, I think the taxes are too high and, and it's not tax friendly yet. Um, but it's certainly one of the more tax friendly states, and so that's why we're, our economy is growing, and that's why we're doing well, and that's why jobs are being created here, and they're being lost out in California. But I mean, I'm, I'm branching off outside local politics here, but when it really gets down to it, just make it easy for business to get done and you'll have an appealing environment for.
Well, you know, Texas, Austin just over, just surpassed New York City as a number two market now. So, we are.
They're coming.
Yeah, we're.
They're coming, I don't need, uh, we don't need to give them money, they're coming.
And of course, you got the, where the live music capital of the world here, it's really an exciting place.
I love this city, I'll never live anywhere else, I love Austin.
Okay, folks, we're gonna go ahead and run, um, Chris's, uh, one of his videos here, it was about four minutes, and then we'll be back to, uh, everybody, everybody here will ask you some questions about what's going on.
Hey, I like questions.
Okay, so here we go, folks.
My name is Chris Bailey, I'm a 30-year-old native Austinite who loves and is devoted to being a part of Austin. I'm an insurance adjuster with 10 years of experience and a small business owner. I'm a homeowner in the scenic Brook neighborhood by the Y and Oak Hill. I'm also a single father of a beautiful seven-year-old girl that I have raised. For most of my life, my passion has been traveling. As I got older and started paying attention to politics, I, I got frustrated and wanted to do something about what was going on, so I started researching. I looked at my elected officials, and I don't feel like they represent me or any regular people for that matter. I've talked to the politicians, I've written letters and emails and made phone calls, I get automated responses, our leaders don't listen, there is no connection to us. I am not running for the seat to become a career politician, I'm running for this office because there is absolutely no common sense in our government right now. I don't see anyone standing up for what is right or for the everyday person. Why is it so difficult to talk about issues that affect us every single day? They affect our very way of life. Austin had 8,749 burglaries reported in 2010, out of which we're solving around 5% or less than 500 of these crimes. This is absolutely pathetic. According to Bill Gibbons, a manager to the, for the Austin Police Department, police have, only have the capability of responding to about 45% of reported burglaries. This is absolutely unacceptable. Investigating crimes like these should be the priority for the Austin Police Department. I saw this quote from a commander at APD, victims should never expect a call back just because they filled out a report. When there are leads and there's something to go on, we'll follow up. I disagree, we need to be responding to everyone that reports a burglary. We arrested 3,219 people in Austin for the possession of marijuana. According to the Austin Police Department, it takes about an hour and a half for a police officer to arrest and book somebody into jail for this. This means we spent over 4,800 hours of police officers' time handling marijuana arrests in 2010. We don't even have to arrest people for marijuana, we can just give them a ticket. Yet our city council gives its blessing to APD to continue spending millions of dollars of your taxpayer money to continue putting people in jail that they don't even have to. There is no common sense here, this is accomplishing absolutely nothing and it's incredibly expensive. So let's back up, we spend over 4,800 hours of officer time and millions of dollars putting people in jail for marijuana, a crime without a victim. And we neglected to even follow up or call back around 4,800 victims of burglaries in Austin, serious crimes that do involve victims. Where are our priorities? I would rather have the police investigating who robbed my home than out arresting somebody for marijuana possession. Is this really a common sense way to apply our resources? The Austin City Council thinks so. Who supports ignoring people whose homes have been broken into? Let's reallocate our resources towards something worthwhile like burglaries. It's not rocket science, it's common sense. Another issue is the fire department. We have real problems in the fire department right now. Since the year 1985, we have managed to add one single additional firefighter to downtown Austin. One single firefighter in over 25 years of massive growth in this area. This is more than a minor problem, this is dangerous and irresponsible. Austin has huge skyscrapers that are being built, the population is exploding downtown, and we're growing faster, and we're trying to house even more people. This defies common sense. Next, the Austin City Council has taken on the role of your physician, they're prescribing all of us medication that has never even been approved by the FDA. The city council spends about half a million dollars a year to put a chemical into your water, it's called fluoride. Now, I'm not gonna get into the debate of, is dumping chemicals in the water supply for us to drink good or bad for us? A quick Google search can help you figure that out. The point really is that a question needs to be asked. Do you want the government deciding what medicine you and your family should be taking and delivering it into you in your water? Is it the place of the Austin City Council to decide that they need to medicate us? The recommended dosage of fluoride for infants is zero. How many mothers in this city make their formula for their babies with tap water? People have been testifying to Austin City Council for years about stopping this practice, yet the council ignores them and does nothing. Parking meters are also a big issue right now, I am firmly against making people pay to park on the street at night and on the weekends. My name is Chris Bailey, and I'm running on a very unusual platform of common sense. It's an issue that's been lost for a long time in our politics, and I believe that people will want to vote for common sense solutions, and that's what I'm doing. I'm running for city council to give Austinites another option besides more of the same, because that's what's being offered by my opponent. I will be an advocate for the people of Austin and true public safety. Vote for Chris Bailey on May 14th and vote for common sense, thank you.
We're kind, this is kind of a loose show down here.
Oh, are we back? Hey, can I do this one? Welcome back, thanks for joining us.
Welcome back.
Yeah, Gary Johnson, I know you've got some questions for Mr. Bailey, so you live in, oh, see, I can't vote for you, I live in Plugerville.
Yeah, don't pay attention to him.
Well, it's true though.
I can't vote either, I live in San Marcos.
He lives in San Marcos.
I thought I was gonna come in here and pick up a couple votes, I'm on it.
Okay, well, I'll ask you about Max Knopf Singer, he comes out of nowhere and run, is running, why is he running?
Uh, so, so I'm gonna give his campaign spiel now.
No, 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 I was just.
Uh, what, what he says, and, and actually, when it boils down to, I've really, I've gotten to know Max, and I really like Max a lot, he's, he's a really good guy. Um, but what, what he says repeatedly in the forums and the debates is it's the spending. He, he watched the spending go up and up and up, and, oh man, where do I get started? And, and really, I agree completely with him, the spending is out of control. We were throwing money at all sorts of projects, the water treatment plant, uh, that, that my opponent voted for, and this is why, uh, why Max said he picked place three as well, is, uh, Randy Shade was the swing vote on, on building that water treatment plant, which is gonna end up costing much more than initially projected. I mean, we're, I'm quite sure when it's all said and done, we'll be looking at close to a billion dollars for it, but.
So I'm gonna ask you, let me stop you there, the water treatment plant, is your concern about a water treatment plant, are you saying that they just got snookered and they got, they're paying way too much for it?
Oh, I mean, I could use this answer for several of these same examples, um, with, with the water treatment plant specifically, though, you have to look at Austin, and, uh, we, we do not have this plentiful water supply to treat all this extra water. Uh, we're, we're planning around growth, everything is done on this concept of we need to grow as quickly as possible, and this water treatment plant is along the same lines. Um, it's not for the people today, if you turn on your faucet, water comes out, we have enough water for the people that live here today. Yet, we're looking at spending all of this money from, from taxpayer, taxpayers that live in Austin today to pay for the services that the people tomorrow are going to need. Um, so, but, but backing up even, back to what I was saying with the water treatment plant, uh, we don't need it. And, and we don't have the water to support the amount of growth that we're trying to get in the city or that we're anticipating. Austin cannot support our population doubling, we do not have the water for that, we're going into another drought now. And, and so, that, that's a, a, a key factor right there, but it, it's a small part of a much larger issue when it comes to growth, and I'd love to talk about that a little bit more in detail, but there's other.
But the water treatment, like, was it a, a deal where somebody's getting all this money, I mean, why is it costing so much?
Well, I, I mean, somebody's always making money anytime something's getting built. I mean, I'm, I'm not behind the scenes on seeing, seeing exactly how everything's playing out, but you can look at, at any city project, really, I mean, it starts off with a very reasonable price tag for something, and then you just watch it grow. And then get more expensive a, as the project goes on, they come back, oh, we forgot, we need 50 million more dollars for this, and, oh, we forgot, we need another 100 million dollars here, and it, it, it's kind of sad that it seems that's the way it goes. I mean, you can look at, at so many different projects, and, and you, you watch the city council just kind of make these mistakes, and, and you wonder, how did that happen? Another good example is the, the biomass plant up in northeast Texas, this is a $2.3 billion energy purchase agreement. And again, we're, we're looking at the person I'm running against that voted for this, and, and they, the city council bought it like it was a used car, I mean, they came up and they, they just, they, they deliberated for almost no time, it was a matter of only a few weeks, and they decided to spend $2.3 billion for a very small amount of power. And, and that's driving our energy bills up, the water treatment plan is driving our water bills up, and we could have done without this, this energy purchase agreement. And, and so, it is runaway spending, it, it is government officials feeling like they're not accountable to, to the people. And so, when we, when you look at your, your enter, your electric bill and the rates are gonna start going up pretty soon here, and you look at your water bill and the rates are gonna start going up pretty soon here, and you, you just, they're hitting you from all angles. And they're, they're trying to, to tax you in your electricity, they're trying to tax you in your water, and they're trying to tax you in the.
I want to ask you about the process, how was the, I saw one of your signs coming down here on thorough 35.
Did you like it?
You got a pretty good sign campaign.
They're, they're the green ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, you, you, so you're raising some money?
Yeah, I, I've been real fortunate, and there, there have been, it's really a grassroots campaign, you're, you're seeing regular folks that don't really get involved in, in local elections come out, and, and they're actually donating money. And I, I've said, here's what I'm going to use the money for, can you donate $5? And then, you know, I'll have a string of emails saying.
How's the media been treating you?
Uh, the media didn't like me, I mean, when you started.
Wasn't there an article about you in the paper today?
Uh, the Statesman had me in there today, and the Chronicle had me in their paper on Thursday, when they released their Thursday edition. I'll tell you what the Chronicle did, um, and I should probably not do this, but they put my picture on a page where they didn't even mention me. You've got the, you've got three candidates on one page, and they write all this stuff, and then you flip the page over and you have a picture of me on a completely different page, and they never mentioned my name on that page at all. And, and it's, it's kind of like, why are they doing that? I, I wonder, I don't know. Um, I, I, I think that when you come out and you try to be honest, you're not really making people happy. Um, there, there are some people that, that are not looking for that, they're, I'm not.
Who does the media favor?
Uh, right now, they, I really see the media going a lot more towards Kathy Tovo. I, I see the media being very supportive of her, at the same time, though.
Why? Is she liberal?
Uh, well, yes, I, I mean, pretty much everybody's a, a self-proclaimed Democrat on the, on the.
That's running against you?
That's running against me, I'm not, I'm not a self-proclaimed Democrat, I, I really, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I, I have a lot of issues in common with, with the Democrats, and, and I think that there's plenty of reasons that, that they should support me, and I'd love to work with, with, with anybody from any political party. Um, and so I'm, I'm not, it's not a partisan race, I'm not trying to make it a partisan race.
But they, they don't like Randy Shade?
Um, well, again, it, it depends on which reporters we're talking about, because, um, Sarah Coppola with the Statesman wrote a, a very flattering article about Randy Shade on the email scandal that came out, and saying that the emails show a softer side of Randy Shade, and, and that if you really read into the emails, it was a very flattering article towards Randy Shade, but, um, I, I actually have looked through those emails and I disagree completely, um.
Well, tell everybody what the email issue is about.
You know, it, well, see, I think it's all distorted on what they're talking about, the, with the email issue, it's not what they should be talking about. They're talking about, did Randy Shade say something rude to this person or that person? Yeah, she did, but, I mean, that's not really the issue, I mean, being rude is not, that, that's not something that you should be unelected for or anything like that. The real issue is that a member of Randy Shade's campaigns, or not campaign staff, a member of Randy Shade's staff sent out an email to all the council members with step-by-step instructions on how to delete information off your computer so that it's not discoverable to the public. And so this is the email that doesn't get talked about, this is the one that they're not bringing up in the newspaper, it's flat out against the law. It is a violation of the law to do what they did, and then they came out later and they admitted that they're using software that's not discoverable to the public. When they're working, I mean, our tax dollars are paying for these services and we should be able.
And the computers.
And the computers, eh, all of it, yeah. Um, and, and so we should.
So it's, it's not, what are they hiding is really the, the question, why are they hiding?
And you don't know the answer to that question, and you won't know the answer to that question, because whatever it was, I only saw an email telling you how to delete that information. But the paper doesn't talk about that for some reason, that's not the, that's not the big, the big issue here, but, but I do, I, I mean, I, I feel like that, that is scary, that is really scary. When we've got our representative and her staff, and I asked, you know, this, this email came out and it was sent a year and a half ago, she said, well, you know, I know how to properly manage people, and he shouldn't have written that, but I asked, why is he still on your staff? If, if he's.
Are you still there?
Oh yeah, he's still working for, and, you know, once you have somebody who, who your, your, your ethics or your, your, your integrity is brought into question like that, to stand beside that person, well, it says something about her character at that point. I, I mean, and this is not a small thing, this is a big deal, and for some reason, the papers just haven't picked up on that, so, I.
I want to ask you about the Austin Police Department.
Oh, I, I'll talk about the Austin Police Department.
From my perspective, see, we did a two-hour documentary back in 2000 about, uh, the authorities in Williamson County. You know, how there was dozens of people alleging that they, basically, they were just terrorists in Williamson County. But what, but what I'm, but what I'm seeing with the Austin Police Department and the current chief is they're moving towards that. is they're moving towards that more hardcore drug war, more, just whatever empowers a state.
Well, well, that's easy, isn't it? It's easy to do that.
You see, do you understand what I'm, the point I'm making?
I, I do and I'm making my own. I, it's, it's easy to do that. It's easy to find somebody with marijuana, arrest them and say, look, we caught a criminal. And then at the same time, you look at what their, what their, their rates are on the crimes that they're solving that involve victims. And this is what my, my real campaign issue is. Uh, you know, while, while the marijuana issue, I, I certainly embrace. I, I don't, you know, I, I absolutely, I, I think our, our laws are wrong when it comes to that. But really, it's part of a bigger issue on just victimless crimes in general.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and the focus, the focus of the police is on victimless crimes.
Tickets, speeding tickets, yeah, stuff like that.
Yeah, and, and we are directly ignoring crimes that involve a victim. And, and so, that whole mindset needs to be changed. The Statesman came out with an article about a month ago saying 55% of the people that report home burglaries, they get no investigation, they get no callback, they get no follow-up from the police. They call, they're given a case number and that's it. Nothing is ever done and it's not looked into.
They're out busting people with FODs, stuff like that.
But they spent over 5,000 hours and they arrested 3,219 people for marijuana possession last year. I mean, that's millions of dollars of your money enforcing marijuana, which, marijuana laws, which is a crime that doesn't involve a victim. And we are directly ignoring the very people that are crying for help, saying.
There's also been a lot of, uh, APD's killed a number of people here the last 10 years or so.
There, there's, there's been some incidences and, and you, you see the, the settlement issue with the Nathaniel Sanders case come through the city where they, they initially agreed on a, the recommendation was for a $750,000 settlement. Then it comes before the council and they bring it down to 500,000 and then, and then it doesn't settle. And so, for, for one reason or another, eh, with, with really, I, I'll tell you what I think on the whole issue of, of police accountability. A really good answer to this would, well, I don't know that it's a, a great answer, but it's one step towards, towards an answer, is why don't the police have little pocket cameras? Take a camera, stick it in their pocket, it always records and it records to a little flash drive. And at the end of their shift, they turn in their flash drive and it gets stored on a, on a database and a, on a big hard drive. And then each day, they get their flash drive and they stick it in the little pocket camera and then whatever they're doing is on the record. And then issues like the Nathaniel Sanders case where all you have is a, a dash cam on a police car that's facing a completely different direction. We kinda take that out of, out of play there.
Even with those though, they're still gonna be arresting people for pot possession. But, but the perception is that, that's good, you know, but.
Yes, and that's why I chose place three to run in because my opponent Randy Shade, uh, her, it's her appointment to the Public Safety Commission, a man named Mike Levy, that, that Art Osuveta reports to and that kinda coordinates things with Fire EMS and police. It's the Public Safety Commission. They oversee the direction. And so, I, I think getting on council and getting a resolution through, eh, really, I'd, I'd like to work as, as much as I can towards just complete non-enforcement of the laws, but I'll also support any steps that, that take us in that direction. Uh, I think it was Portland or Seattle or maybe even both of them, their city councils voted to make marijuana possession the lowest priority of enforcement. So basically, it tells the police, if there's anything else you can do besides arrest somebody for marijuana possession, go do that. Just, just.
One more question before we get to these calls.
Sure. Heck, I got calls. All right. I like calls.
Elgin has already, uh, banned it. What's your thoughts on fluoride for the city of Austin and their water supply?
Uh, yeah, you may have seen me talking about that in my video, actually. I, I am against fluoridating the water, but, but I'm not gonna get into the debate of is it, is fluoride good for you? Is fluoride bad for you? You've got people on both sides. Really, I, I, I just don't wanna get into that. What I feel on this is it's not the government's place to decide what medication I should be taking, period. So it doesn't matter if it's good for me. It doesn't matter if it's bad for me. It's not the government's place to make that decision for me. If I want clean, healthy teeth, I'll go buy toothpaste and I'll brush my teeth. I don't need to ingest chemicals.
So the thing is, they shouldn't be forcing us to use it.
No, no, not at all.
Okay, we're, we're visiting here with, uh, Chris Bailey, Austin City Council candidate. We've also got the lovely Lorraine D'Anarist and radio host Gary Johnson, taking some calls now. Okay, here we go. Welcome. You're all worldwide.
You're talking about live music, capital world. I call it the loud noise music of the world. I'd like to see Austin slow down, cause you're laughing. We were voted the other day, second city in this United States of having teenagers, having children out of wedlock.
Thank you, Nate.
This is something that we're paying for, free of charging out of our pocket. What's gonna slow them down? Who's gonna educate them? The schools can't keep taking care and babysitting everybody. If we don't get there and start enforcing rape laws on people having kids with little 15-year-old kids, uh-uh. And this is where we're spending and wasting a lot of tax dollars, taking care of them, cause then they go on welfare. What's he gonna do about it?
Thank you, sir. Uh, before I forget, uh, sanctuary cities, what's your thoughts?
Um, well.
I'm an open borders guy.
Yeah, I, 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 I kind of lean more in that direction as well. I, I, I don't support the, the concept of making Austin a sanctuary city. Um, but at the same time, I'm not really looking to prevent people from.
Terrorize immigrants like a lot of.
Yeah, I don't, I don't support that at all because a- again, you get into, and I've, I've had multiple discussions with people on, on what to do with immigrants. And the real problem, we, we do not have an immigration problem in this country. What we have is, is we have a, we have a welfare problem in this country. I mean, we're incentivizing people to get here and as long as we, we offer all of these, these services.
Yeah, but that's not a problem of the immigrants.
No, no, I, you know, I, I, I look at, at their situation and if you can get across the border and, and get over here, eh, there is a wealth of social services that are available. You get free school, you get free housing, free electricity, all these things, you know. And so, what are we gonna do? Ship them back across? They'll be back by dinnertime tomorrow. Eh, I mean, the, the problem really is the, the way that the system is set up and how it incentivizes people to come. And so, I, I don't really, I don't really plan to, to do a whole lot about the immigration situation in general. It, it's not something that, uh, I, I'm certainly not gonna start advocating for more social services and help more.
You're not gonna advocate putting walls around the city of Austin, are you?
No, no.
Say, some people have advocated.
But your welfare answer is also, your answer, your answer to the caller, he was also asking about welfare as well.
Sure, yeah. Um, yeah, that, that's really, that, that is the problem and that's not really, the sanctuary city is more of a, a local issue. But I mean, in, in getting into, to the real issue.
Civil liberties, what, you're, you're real big on civil liberties?
I'm real big on civil liberties. I think that it's actually the job of the city council to protect people or any government official to protect people's rights. They're there to protect our rights.
Welcome. You're all worldwide.
Uh, Jeff Davis for president.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And this, this March piece, uh, you know, I've actually endorsed, uh, on frontline, uh, Chris Bailey, your, uh, uh, guest here. I talked to you earlier, Chris.
Hey, thank you so much.
And, uh, I just wanted to say that, uh, yeah, we need common sense and we also need people to step up. I remember Wes Benedict, when he was here before he moved to Washington and other people in the community. We're just not having enough people step up like Chris and run. And that's really what we need to do if we wanna defend our liberties and defend the constitution and, and, and take back this out-of-control spending and many of the issues, uh, that are confronting us. Uh, we're gonna have to get people like Chris in office and we're gonna have to get more people like Chris to run. But it is, uh, I did wanna say some, uh, one thing before I let y'all go. Uh, I just wanted to say that it's really hard and I really admire and appreciate, uh, Chris running because this media and the other gentleman that jo, uh, has just joined you, Joshua Ingles, Ingles, I, I endorsed him as well. But it's, it's really hard to find people, uh, to stand up because of the abuse of the system or the, the way the media treats people or the way, you know, they're ostracized or left out. And it seems like the more legitimate candidate you are, the more you have these type things happen to you. Like, you know, what was talked about earlier about the Chronicle or the Statesman or, or this media in general. And I think that's because, you know, it's just the way it is when you challenge the established, uh, uh, what would you call them, Jeff?
The, the establishment.
Yeah, just the establishment in general, yeah.
Yeah.
The new world order, new world order, maybe. You ever heard that term?
But anyway, I did wanna thank the two gentlemen you had, as well as you, Jeff, and Gary and everybody, Mike and down there and the wonderful service you're providing the community because really, other than the Jeff Davis Show and Frontline Texas and the Trailer Park and like Gary Johnson ruled the law, other than the alternative media and things of this nature, uh, there's really, uh, not much out there.
I agree with that.
Well, there, there's.
I agree with that.
There is Facebook and I'll, I'll.
Oh, yeah, but yeah. But that's not the establishment owned and controlled yet.
Check that out. Anyway, thanks a lot, uh, for all y'all do down there at the, the Jeff Davis Show.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's go ahead. Okay, first, let me introduce.
Josiah Ingles for place one.
Josiah Ingles?
For city council place one.
Austin, Texas, city council place one.
Yes.
Give us, if you would, just give us a quick opening statement and we're gonna run, uh, some video from two weeks ago.
Well, um, my name is Josiah Ingles and I'm running for place one. Um, I'm running for place one in order to bring more transparency and accountability, especially in the way of the city budget. The city budget determines almost everything the city departments can and can, cannot do. Um, and I feel that we've, city, this city council has wasted a lot of money. We need to put our city budget in line with the priorities and needs of the community. But also, we need the true transparency of the count, of the city budget. Right now, it's almost impossible to track every cent and what it's spent for and they have it like that for they can do whatever they want. And as long as it is like that, we can't have the transparency we need, to have the information we need in order to hold them truly accountable for what they're doing.
What about the war on drugs? How do you feel about the war on drugs?
Well, that's actually a very good question.
I haven't heard this yet. I'm getting excited.
The war on drugs, there's no doubt that it does take away a lot of resources from other things like fighting crimes with victims as, um, Chris has said. Um, but also, you have to look at the federal level. Um, on the federal level, they imprison a lot of people across the United States for this, but there's actually something happening that most people don't look at. We're privatizing the comp, the, the prison system and they're leasing it out and then those multimillion-dollar companies that get paid per person, per day, is funneling money back into lobbying for stronger laws in order to imprison more people so they can make more money.
That's what I call the criminal justice industrial conflict.
So they basically created this modern-day slavery system.
Yeah, that's right.
In the name of profits, which is the same thing we had in the older days. It's just a different target, a different target group. And so, that's my real viewpoint on the war on, on drugs. And we as a society have a lot of other problems that need to be addressed. And as long as we're, we're wasting time on this, um, and especially in the area of marijuana, no one's ever died of a marijuana overdose. So you're really not protecting anyone. And so therefore, as long as we're wasting time on this, we're denying all of the other real problems we as a society really have.
I wanted to mention to you, uh, I'm gonna say this, even though it was kinda private. I was sitting out here smoking a cigarette and Randy Shade came walking out and looking, looking right at me. And, uh, she said, uh, she said hello and I said hello and I said, uh, city council, right? She says, yes. I said, why don't you do something? Why don't you end this war on drugs? And she looked at me and she says, I hear ya. And I said, look what's going on in Mexico. There's, there's up to 40,000 people have been killed along the Mexican-American border 'cause of the war on drugs.
Yeah, it's something like 7,500 every year.
Isn't that, and I guarantee it's not just the drug cartels killing people. Have you ever seen the Mexican police down there? They wear them black ski mask and.
Well, but it's not, you know, the people killing each other, I, I mean, they're, they're killing each other over who gets to sell us the drugs. Uh, that's what it really boils down to. They're kill, they're fighting to get to sell us the drugs. And as long as, as long as we keep marijuana specifically illegal, that's 60% of their income right there. They're gonna keep killing each other because there's a lot of money in that business and we just hand it over to the criminals.
Okay, let, try this one here real quick. You got the video ready, Lorraine?
Yeah, I'm not ready.
Okay, welcome. You're all worldwide.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi, sir.
This is Mark.
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 Mark Phillips.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, how you doing, Mark?
Oh, pretty good, pretty good. I've been, been working.
Yeah, I haven't, we haven't heard from you in a while.
But I, I worked during the day today, so I could watch y'all's show tonight.
Cool.
Yeah, yeah. I was, I was at the Libertarian Candidates Forum last week and, uh, it was, it was a good deal. Uh, I'm definitely supporting Chris. I got a Chris Bailey sign in front of my house. And, uh, I was also in the debate, I was really impressed with the answers, uh, Josiah gave to the question. I, I think you did a really good job of, uh, kinda looking at problems and, and kinda trying to find the root causes of problems. And, uh.
You know, hey, Mark, you know what the root.
I'm definitely gonna vote for Chris. I like, I like Josiah and I also like Roger Chan. Uh, so I haven't decided, uh, for, I guess, place one, uh, who I'm gonna vote for, but, but that guy, the incumbent, Chris Bailey, he is bad news, total.
Whoa, 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 slow down, slow down.
Okay.
The incumbent again?
The incumbent, Randy Shade.
Yeah.
Right, is that right?
Oh, no, he was talking about place one. Chris Riley is the incumbent. Yeah.
Yeah, Chris Riley is, is bad news.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Agenda 21, anti-private property rights, radical environmentalist. He's for light rail. I mean, we gotta get rid of Chris Riley. He's the worst one.
Do you know, uh, you mentioned, uh, creating crime, Mark. Do you know that, uh, the vast majority of crime in America is an artifact of drug prohibition, prostitution prohibition? These various prohibitions that drive these industries into black markets, that's what's creating the bulk of the crime.
I'm totally, I'm, I might, I got my reservations about legalizing prostitution, but I'm.
Nah, there's nothing, what's your reservations?
I don't know. It's, it's like a lot of like.
The spread of diseases is caused by the prohibition. Prostitution in itself is just two consenting adults engaging in sex for money. That's all it is. The, 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 the problems, like spread of diseases and hookers getting killed out on, by streetwalking is an artifact of the prohibition. You understand that, Chris?
I wanna hear what he says.
Okay, go ahead.
Young girls are, are like runaways and, and they, they kinda get forced into it because they, they wouldn't have any place else to stay, except they live on the street. That, that is my main reservation about it.
No, but the thing is, if they, if it was legal, uh, that would, brothel houses wouldn't hire those people, well, young, young, uh, less than 18 or 19.
Okay, well, well, uh, I mean.
You gotta be for freedom, Mark, on every issue.
I would like to address the, um, your concern about which candidate to, um, to support for place one. There is a question, very important question that really hasn't been asked and the media has, uh, purposely not focused on it. And that is, this behind closed-door meetings, Mr. Chan was also there during the time in which it was going on and did nothing to stop it. And so, I've been asking on this campaign trail, why has he done nothing to stop it during his time on the, as, on the administration as first city council, or, I mean, for the city manager? And so, that's a real question that he's avoided and he hasn't wanted to ask and I think that needs to be asked. Is can we really trust him since he re, he knew it was going on and he did nothing to stop it?
Okay, I'll definitely take that under consideration when I vote. And that's about all I got to say, uh, and thanks for taking my call.
Peace, Mark. Okay, let's run, uh, five minutes of the Waco piece from, uh, the other day and then we'll, uh, have final comments when we come back. Does that sound good?
Yeah.
All right, here we go, folks. Okay, another quick smoke break.
Coffee. Look at her face.
Aw, I'm looking for some.
Look at that.
Sticking up the flowers.
Look at him. She found her cool spot.
Everybody need a little piece of the show. Everybody need it.
Let's do it.
That's awesome. Okay.
Can we do a little piece, can we do a little piece of the show, Nate? Everybody get in here. Nate? Hey. Should we, yeah, Nate, do a little piece of the show? Can we, what you think? Good point.
Three unexploded devices were found inside Oklahoma City. So let's remember the children as well that were murdered by our own government on an inside job to bring it to police state, to regulate the militia. Ooh, but militias aren't killing anybody. It's our own government that's killing people. They killed people here. They killed people in Oklahoma City. 9/11.
Ruby Ridge.
Ruby Ridge. They, the list goes on and on and on.
Gordon Call.
Yeah, Gordon Call. Absolutely, Gordon Call. They murdered.
Did Gary's take off today? Have you ever been here before, Gary?
The Murville link.
Well, I was in Waco during Waco.
Many others. And 9/11 is the same thing. London Financial District, they're the economic power that runs all the governments of the world, or not all of them, most of them. And they're the ones that are, have taken over. It's the Tory families, the ancestral families like the Bushes. And anyway, a whole slew of them. Uh, they go back to, used to be families that were involved in the British India Trading Company and the East India Trading Company and the Dutch India Trading. Indian Trading and stuff. They settled here as Tory families and they were the spoilers, the drug runners, the slave runners. And they would, you know, sell alcohol and guns and stuff to the Indians and everything like that, just like they're doing present day around the world. They're instigating insurrections. They are overthrowing governments. They're building governments with their own leaders. They're trashing economies. They, they, it's the same elements that created the derivatives in the 70s and 80s, 90s that destroyed our economy. And it's our own leaders, members of the Tory families that are in Congress and everything, that are having us bail out these foreign banks. Matter of fact, there's a group of, of about a dozen banks set up. The first ones were created in 71 with a specific purpose, created by, you know, Rothschilds for the specific purpose of collapsing our, our US economy. And now that all of that's coming to fruition, you know, we might have only a year left, two years left before, you know, before their mission is accomplished. And then those banks will go bankrupt like you said, anytime. I'm going to wrap it up.
Okay.
Gary, Gary, Gary didn't say anything about what, what did you think about today, Gary?
Well, I think it's important that we remember all of this. And, you know, a lot of this happened because of the time it happened. The government lied every day with those press conferences. And then the media didn't ask any questions to those press conferences. So let's try to get in there. They wouldn't let us in. You had that press credential. And then the media is lying even today, even as late as this week, CNN is still lying. Thank goodness we had the internet. Thank goodness we have the Jeff Davis Show and programs that are telling the truth, that people can find out what really happened. Because I think the truth is coming out. It's coming out very gradually. But people don't trust the media. They certainly don't trust the government. And I think that this thing, this building standing here is a tribute to people who want the truth and who want religious freedom, wants freedom in this country. And so because people are still keeping this story alive, I think there will be justice eventually. It's not going to come in our court systems. I'm sorry, Jeff, it's not going to happen.
Wow.
But it should happen, but it's not going to happen. It's going to happen because people are keeping the story alive. People are remembering it. It's going to be, I hope, remembered for generations to come.
And Charlie Pace is keeping the place up. Can you say a few words with Jeff? I don't hear.
Who's Jeff?
Right there.
That's Dave.
I maintain that Branch Davidians were murdered in 1993 in Waco, Texas.
I think there's no dispute. The government way, way overreacted on that one. By a long shot, but-
You wanted to talk a little bit about the voting.
Oh, yeah.
That the process might not, it might, it might be dishonest.
Well, here's, I'm, I'm not going to go so far as to make any accusations here, but I'll, I'll say what I think. There, there was the guy that went in and voted for, I can't remember if he was voting for Bill White or Rick Perry, whoever, and he had a cell phone. And he picked whoever it was that he was going to vote for. And it switched his vote. When he went in to cast his ballot, it popped it up and said, are these the votes that you want? And it had switched it on the governor's race. And so he went back in and he changed it. And he, it changed it again. It switched it back to who he didn't want to vote for. And so he took out his phone and he recorded the machine doing this. And, and so really, I don't know, I don't know how it happened or why it happened, but the fact that it's been called into question, there's no way to audit people's votes with these electronic voting machines. You, all it does is it spits out a number that says this candidate got this many votes at the end of the day. And you can't go in and verify each vote and make sure that you know that those votes are, are accurate. All you can do is just count the tallies at the end of the day. And so for that reason alone, for the fact that there's no real way to audit it, and that-
There's you with Willie Nelson.
Oh, yeah. Willie came into town.
Yeah.
To finish what I was saying real quick, I support returning to paper ballots for that very reason. But yeah, this was Saturday night at Willie's birthday party. He, Willie Nelson actually endorsed me in this race. And he's, he's been giving me his support. And I'm, I'm so thankful to him. He's such a great guy. But yeah, I got to meet him on Saturday night and we, we chatted for a minute. It was pretty cool.
How do you know Willie Nelson?
That, well, I, I mean, believe it or not, he kind of supports my cause here.
Yeah.
So he, he unfortunately-
He's a national spokesperson for normal, right?
Uh, well-
At least he was.
Now it's the, the teapot party.
Teapot party, that's right. I've seen that on Facebook.
Willie Nelson's teapot party. But that, this all sprang up out of him getting, he got busted for marijuana possession.
Yeah.
And back in November. And it's just, what kind of threat is Willie Nelson? Why does Willie Nelson need to be in jail? Seriously.
Why does anybody that smokes pot?
Amen. Amen. I mean, I'm not, I'm-
It's funny too, because illegal drugs are, or legal drugs, prescription drugs, are killing people.
They are.
There's big law firms making millions of dollars off of suits against legal drugs for, that have, you know, given people heart attacks and strokes.
Oh, you see commercials all the time. Did you take this drug between this state and this state? You may be-
So the whole thing is really just a shambles. Okay, we've got three minutes. Gary Johnson, final comment.
Well, I, you know, this is an important election coming up here. And Josiah, I want to know, why are you running for place one? Did you not like Chris Riley? Why did you choose that place?
I chose that place because since I ran for mayor in '09, and then I ran for State Border Education, but during the State Border Education race, I was keeping an eye on city council. And I had stated in the mayor's race that if I did not win, and I was going to keep an eye on what's going on, and I, that I would possibly run against whoever I felt did not represent the people the most. And I, the thing that really secured me to run against him was the Nathaniel Sanders case. That's a horrible thing that they did to that family. They, the legal system continues to revictimize every single day that they have to continue to work on that. It revictimizes that family. And him as a lawyer knew the repercussions that would have on the federal courts and that they would lose trust in us as a city and as a governing body. And he knew better. And we sent our lawyers out as a city to make the settlement for a certain dollar amount. And at the last minute, because the police force said, well, that makes us look bad, where he wanted to, to, to change it. And he wanted to, to make it for it didn't look so bad in the city council.
Okay, one minute. Chris Bailey, final comment. Thanks for coming on the show.
Hey, thanks for having me. I, I appreciate it. This is a fun show. Please check out my website, BaileyForChange.com, or feel free to check out my website. And get involved on Facebook if you like and ask some questions. I'd love to answer any questions you have. But more importantly, it is early voting right now. Tomorrow morning, the polls are open. Annie Randalls.
Chris Bailey for place one.
Place three.
Place three. And Josiah Ingles for-
For place one.
Place one.
What's your website?
JosiahIngles.com is my website. Please visit it.
There we go. Speaking to UT students. Okay, folks, that is it. That wraps it up. Love everybody out there. Love everybody for being here. We are scheduled live next week. Good luck in your elections.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.